This meeting is being convened by electronic means and as such council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose vote connection, lose connection during the voting process, staff will get back to you online quickly and will suspend the voting process. The contact information should have been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link which is tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Of course, as always, we acknowledge we're in the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam Squawners and Sabo Tooth people and thank them for their generosity to all who live on these lands. And thanks to staff. This will be my third thank you today and we could say it over and over and over again. Thank you very much for all your work. Go ahead, the roll call, please.
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr?
Here.
Councillor De Genova? Councillor De Genova not on. Councillor Frye?
Here.
Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick?
Present.
Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle? She's dealing with the IT challenge. Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
You, councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much clerks. Some announcements first, the public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Electronic participation is highly encouraged as there are capacity limits within city hall. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merit of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendation and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so you don't miss your turn to speak. Any comments can be submitted in writing at the web form vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. Those speaking on behalf of other groups, a person, sorry, of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be spoken themselves. So we'll need confirmation that these folks are on the line. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. So please say next as we go through your slides and I'll help you with that. We also have a long-standing commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. So remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. We're a quasi judicial body this evening, which means council is only to consider the merits of the zoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speakers list. After we hear speakers, council can approve the application in principle, refuse the application, or refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if we don't conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene on Thursday, October 7th at 6:00 PM. So we're going to start with the first item, which is minor amendments to the FC2 zoning district schedule. And just want to ask first if any councillors wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item. Just need verbal indication. I don't, I don't hear any, so our clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability to amend the FC2 district schedule of the zoning and development bylaw to optimize the use of employment floor space while retaining ground floor spaces for light industrial activities in sub-area E. The amendments also include the addition of healthcare's office used to be consistent with sub-area A of the FC2 district schedule and the I-1 district schedule. No correspondence has been received on this application since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments.
Thank you so much. Any speakers to this item wants to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 46422 hashtag for the close of the speakers list. And that number is on Twitter or also available on the live stream. We have Sean Martinez from Citywide and Regional Planning here to present the application. We do have some speakers, so perhaps we could see the slides. Over to you, staff. Are the slides visible? I can see them on the WebEx. I'm just double checking that they're on the orange cone. Just check here. One second, please. There we go. Clerks, I don't see the slides up yet. Is it just a delay? There they are. Okay, great. We're all ready to go. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sean Martinez. I'm a planner of the Economic Development Planning Team with Citywide and Regional Planning. Today, we are bringing forward amendments to sub-area E of the FC2 district schedule. This covers a single block zone on the southwestern edge of the Falls Creek Flats. Under recommendation A, we have two amendments. The first is to add healthcare office as a conditional use in the sub-area to be allowed only within the office portion of the density. This is being done to leverage the area's walking distance from the new St. Paul's Hospital, create consistency with sub-area A in the same district schedule, as well as with the I-1 district schedule in Mount Pleasant, which also had the addition of the healthcare office use earlier this year. The second change is to amend the way that the floor area is allocated within the sub-area to increase the flexibility in the permitted uses for the upper level employment spaces, while continuing to reserve the ground floor for light industrial uses that require the direct access to loading. Recommendation B is simply conforming change to the Falls Creek Flats area plan for the same amendments here to maintain consistency between our policies and regulations. By way of illustrating the proposed amendments, here is a schematic of a potential development on the site, both before and after the change. On the left, we are showing the allocation of uses and density for a building that can come forward under the current zoning for sub-area E. We have one FSR of, one floor space ratio of industrial uses, which is spread over two levels, represented in orange at the bottom of the drawing. Two FSR of office uses spread over four levels in blue in the middle, and 3.5 FSR of residential spread over seven levels in green at the top portion. Under the current zoning, only general office uses are permitted in the office density. And the industrial density is restricted to a subset of manufacturing and service uses, as well as artist studio B. The schematic on the right is the same development with the two amendments we are proposing. As you can see, the additional, the addition of the healthcare office as a conditional use only applies to the office density and does not change the total amount of office space allowed. The second change moves the minimum required for manufacturing, service, and artist studio B uses to 0.5 FSR and allows for more flexibility for the remaining 0.5 FSR on the upper level marked as flexible employment in gray. This flexible employment density still allows for the existing manufacturing and service uses, as well as artist studio B, but expands the allowed uses to other non-office uses already permitted in the district schedule. These uses include creative products manufacturing, laboratory, artist studio class A, as well as production or rehearsal studio, which work better in the upper level. For further context, this map illustrates the FC2 district outlined in red and sub-area E outlined with a dashed black line within that. The pink areas highlight the location of the new St. Paul's Hospital to the north, to the north of the FC2 district and Emily Carr University to the southeast. The district is also within a five-minute walk of two rapid transit stations, as illustrated by the dashed blue lines. Those stations are the existing Main Street Science World Station and the forthcoming Great Northern Way Station on the Broadway extension of the Millennium Line. As this is a very central and accessible site, close to transportation and key employment locations, the proposed amendments are seeking to maximize its employment potential and provide flexibility for the future. Thank you, mayor and council. Staff are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. So do we have any questions from staff to the, to the planning team? Councillor Hardwick, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Who owns this land?
Sub-area E is privately owned. There's two, the parcel, there's one parcel which has a current development permit application in process, and the other sites to the south, there's three parcels that are also privately owned.
So none of the land included in this is owned by the city through the property endowment fund?
No, not in sub-area E.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. So why are we doing this in this manner rather than having the landowners make the applications themselves?
So as you know, councillor, with the employment lands and economy review, we have learned a lot through our engagement and our contacts with various stakeholders across the city's economy. And from there, what we've learned quite clearly is that it is, we need to preserve the ground floor spaces for industrial uses, which work better in those areas because they are closer to direct loading. We want to, and what's become clear from that as well, is that we need flexibility on the upper floor in order to maintain, in order to reserve those spaces on the ground floor for industrial. And so we are coming forward with this, these changes to apply that learning from the ELER.
What I understand, I'd like to know what industries apart from the medical ones related to the hospital, and the reason that I ask the question is that, you know, I'll use the film and television industry as an example, you know, through this area, we've always relied on being able to have, you know, older industrial land and facilities because they were affordable. What is going to make this kind of development produce a property that, or facilities that are going to be affordable to industry?
I'll refer that question to Matthew Burke, senior planner.
Hi, thank you very much, Sean. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Matthew Burke, senior planner with the Economic Development Planning Team. I think it's important to kind of emphasize that we are maintaining the ground floor for more traditional kind of production, distribution, and repair services. On page six of the report, there's a footnote that describes all the different types of uses that would be, you know, permitted on that ground floor. These are generally, to your question about affordabilities, are generally uses that can only afford to pay lower rents than some of the other types of uses in this complex type of development, and so it's important to give them ground floor access.
Right, so I'd like to get a little bit more specific on that because again, if I'm scouting locations to put in an industrial use and it is going to be as densely surrounded by activity, it's going to present a whole bunch of problems even if you've got access for vehicles for loading and offloading. Have you considered the implications? Again, I'm looking at it from a logistical standpoint of running an operation, of how that would work and certainly be affordable because really what we look for is the cheapest space we can find.
Sure, I think, I guess I'd also like to point out that this is very much in line with the intentions of the Falls Creek Flats plan. This was intended as an intensive employment type hub where, you know, we were looking to achieve many objectives and providing that ground floor a space for those more traditional production, distribution, and repair type uses was one of those objectives, and that's what this is continuing to do.
Is there modeling that goes with that, that you can share pro formas that can demonstrate that this would be affordable and functional for people in those industrial activities?
Yeah, I guess Sean's just pointing out to me that we, our understanding is that folks who are representing the landowner group are are signed up to speak tonight, so perhaps those questions could go to them.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Weeb, up to five minutes. Questions to staff?
My first question is, looking at the report, it talks about staff have not received a reply from the four tenant leasing commercial spaces on the block. Can you talk about the flexible employment use and do we see it as a significant increase in per square foot cost? And what is that differential, recognizing that it would be a landlet if there is an increased cost in the ability to rent out that flexible employment space?
I believe the best answer, councillor, is the, there are actually, we're not introducing any new uses to the flexible, that flexible employment space. All the uses are already within the district schedule. All the uses are already within the district schedule. There is an, we are allowing more of those to be allowed in that second floor. Our understanding is that with regards to that flexibility, there is no real increase to the marketability of the units since it is the same uses that are already in the district schedule.
So they're already used in the district schedule. This is just allowing them on that floor? Is that because they would only be allowed on the floors above?
Because previously, there was more restriction as to where they could be allowed, yes.
Okay, so when we look at that rentable square footage, do we have a differential in what the rentable per-square-foot would be for industrial versus a second-floor flex space?
We are actually looking at the study currently as part of the continuing implementation of the Employment Lands and Economy Review.
Okay, so we don't know what that is, but we're willing to move forward on this proposal today for this plan. These projects are already in process, so how would the applications for the buildings that are already ready to be built be incorporated? It just is a change of use, so they would build as-is? It would just be an ability for them to rent out differently, is that correct?
Correct, so the current development permit in process would simply continue to be required to adhere to the current district schedule, and then a minor amendment would be processed should this amendment be approved.
Okay, and otherwise, everything follows the current Falls Creek Flats Plan?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Dzhonov, up to five.
Thanks so much, and I just wanted to note on a point of privilege. Mayor Stewart, although I was a few minutes late and was not here for roll call, I was listening to everything, so I just wanted to have that on the record as we are in a positive body. I just wanted to ask staff specifically about considerations here when we're talking about employment lands and zoning and space. Childcare, has this been a consideration? And more so, as our staff have been directed by council to move forward in looking into options for, and I know that the province is funding 24-hour childcare, is that something that's being considered in this? Especially considering the proximity of this to a major healthcare center, St. Paul's Hospital, which is already underway with construction?
Yes, Counselor, so daycare use is already approved, is already permitted use within the FC2 district schedule. So it has always been an option for this.
And I suppose, thank you very much, maybe I should have been more specific. I'm not sure yet if there will be further zoning implications for overnight childcare or childcare that would extend past certain hours as there are with other uses that extend past certain hours or caregiving. Would you expect that that would fit within the current zoning parameters? Or might we have to be back here if there wasn't overnight childcare consideration later on?
I think we'd have to refer that question to our colleagues in Arts Culture and Community Services, specifically our colleagues who are working with childcare. And we could refer the question back.
I'd be interested to find out just if the zoning could fit within the current zoning for childcare or not, just considering the opportunities right now and the mix that we're looking at. But that's the only question I have at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's it for questions from council. Now we're going to hear from the public. We do have two speakers to this item. First one is Alex Dambinski. Alex Dambinski.
Hi there, I'm on the line, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. As mentioned, my name is Alex Dambinski, Development Manager with Quadreel Property Group. Tonight, I will be speaking in support of the proposed amendments. At the corner of First and Main Streets, within Subarea E, there is a vacant development site that is owned by Quadreel. We are actively pursuing city entitlements for a mixed-use building that will deliver 213 rental units and 120,000 square feet of light industrial and office space. We have been working with our development consultant, Hungerford Properties, since 2018 to entitle this site, and they will also be speaking tonight on this matter. The proposed amendments will bring great benefit to this neighborhood by unlocking flexible employment options for light industrial businesses and a wider range of potential office tenants. With the proximity to the new St. Paul's Hospital, there are strong synergies to allowing medical office uses in this area. Our project will deliver over 80,000 square feet of office space that can support these medical uses, that also service the rental units we are providing. And with our project's close proximity to rapid transit, our employment space is able to service a large area of the local population. Also, our project is situated along the Arts Walk that connects Main Streets to the Emily Carr University Campus. Our project will deliver over 40,000 square feet of light industrial space that can support a wider range of businesses that can operate beyond typical working hours. These businesses will further activate the public realm and contribute to the mixed-use nature of this area. We believe the proposed changes to the zoning are required to further unlock the potential of this neighborhood and deliver on the objectives set out in the Falls Creek Flats Plan. We look forward to your consideration on this matter, thank you.
Thank you, you do have a question. Counselor Dzhonov, up to five minutes.
So much, I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record. I'm going to ask you a similar question to staff. Do you feel that this is somewhere, that there may be an opportunity in your proposed project for childcare as well, considering the community around it and the healthcare center, St. Paul's?
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. I absolutely support where you're coming from, and I think there's absolutely a need for more childcare in the city and in this neighborhood. And so absolutely, that is something we can consider for this project, since it is already allowed in this area, and we will consider it. And I want to reiterate that it is important to our project, and it's something we will look at.
Thank you very much, and just further to that, if there was an opportunity to look at a 24-hour or extended-hours childcare, which I understand the provincial government is also looking to co-locate those with healthcare centers? Is that something that, I'm not trying to specifically ask if you would do it, but would you be open-minded to it and consider that if it fit with the office space?
Absolutely, that is in line with where the province is moving forward with childcare, and we would support that as well. I think it plays quite well into the mixed-use nature of the building and the different uses that might operate outside of typical hours as well. And so it would be something we would consider for this project.
Thanks so much, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Counselor. We have up to five.
Yeah, just from your standpoint, what type of businesses are you expecting to bring on the second floor that you wouldn't be able to before? And you talked about flexibility. I know there's a huge creative economy and circular economy growing down there. So what type of businesses have you approached or would look to bring on to the second floor if we made this change today?
Thank you for that question as well. Actually, I will defer that question to our partner, Hungerford, who's going to be speaking as well tonight, can speak a bit more to kind of our sales approach and the tenants we'd be looking for in this area, because I just don't have as much context as they would. But in this kind of area, I think a mixed use of tech or manufacturing and other uses that don't need loading or ground access would be a good fit for the second level there. But like I mentioned, Hungerford will be able to address that question better for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. That is it for questions for you speaker. Thanks so much, we're going to move on to our next speaker, who is John Lugner. You have John Lugner on the line?
Yep, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Sure. Go right ahead, yep, yes we can.
Thank, great, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Lugner. I'm the Director of Leasing and Sales with Hungerford Properties, who's a Vancouver-based developer and landlord. We have been alongside Quadreel Property Group and part of 1717 Lawrence Street Project, which we're deeming and calling archetype, which is planned in the Subarea E of the FC2 zone. And we've been party to the development that's being proposed in that area since 2018. Just to state, we are in support of the proposed amendments that are being discussed here today. Now, given the proximity to the Olympic Village and the subarea being 300 meters of one existing Skytrain and the future Great Northern Way Emily Carr Skytrain Station, the location provides excellent connectivity for a multitude of employment uses. We believe the area to become a new nexus of employment, and Quadreel and Hungerford Properties are very excited to be on the verge of being one of the first projects to kick off in the area since the inception of the Falls Creek Flats Plan in the fall of 2017. The industrial employment economies of Vancouver very much differ from one area to another. Changes to the various areas have shifted and changed with the needs and demands of businesses over a short period of time. What was true in 2017, can't reiterate this enough, is not necessarily true even four years later or even 10 years after, when the first consultation of the Falls Creek Flats Plan was first contemplated in earnest with the city. Now, principle one of the Falls Creek Flats Plan was to modernize the district to support a thriving new and innovative economy, including medical, digital, and creative manufacturing. The contemplated adjustments here to the FC2 zoning for Subarea E in effect align with what the Falls Creek Flats Plan really is suggesting, is adaptability. What we've seen at a macro level, Vancouver's economy has continued the trend of tech talent attribution of job growth, that's similar to other major tech hubs in North America. Now, between 2015 and 2020, tech-based jobs in Vancouver grew by a margin of about 36%, whereas across US and Canada just overall, that same job growth was just 13% over that same period. Now, I think this fact is very relevant to the contemplated FC2 text amendments, as what we see as landlords and developers, not all tech-based jobs are office jobs. From our perspective, enabling and creating flexible policy will allow the next change and evolution of our local economy to be adaptable towards the businesses and functional needs of employment spaces, which are also very important in order to keep up with these economic trends in a growing digital and tech-based economy. Now, with respect to the first proposed amendment, the addition and clarification of healthcare office being allowed in the subarea is welcome due to proximity to St. Paul's Hospital, the new St. Paul's Hospital, as well as Olympic Village to the west and the rest of the residential area of Mount Pleasant to the south. This is something that has been amended already in the I-1 zone in Mount Pleasant already, and it would be welcomed. The second set of proposed changes to the FC2 zoning will further encourage the development of a high-density mixed-use neighborhood with compatible light industrial uses with a wide range of economic uses that include creative, cultural food economy, industrial production, research and development, and other important intensification uses. The changes that are being contemplated here promote and expand those flexible employment uses that are at the core of the FC2 zones intent. We truly believe the uses in the overall FC2 zone are suitable for Subarea E and completely consistent with the objectives of the Falls Creek Flats Plan, and will lead to the creation of a vibrant, successful area that will accommodate a diverse collection of businesses that will set the tone for future development in the area. The LER team through the Vancouver Plan, they've been taking great strides in their work throughout the last number of years to modernize industrial zoning across the city and to ensure this continued employment success that we have in the region. And these recommendations by staff are ones that are proof of those efforts. And I'd just like to thank everyone for the consideration here today.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'll just thank you for calling in. And now I'll just move on to the next part of the agenda tonight, which is to call three times for additional speakers. 1-833-353-8610, code 46422, pound, to get on the list. And I'll ask the clerk for the first time, is there any speakers to this?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, second call, same digits and information. These numbers are on Twitter and they're also on the live stream. Second call, clerks, anybody in the chamber or on the line?
No speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, so we'll do a third call, all the same information. Council, it is 6:45, we will come back at 6:50 to finish this item. Thanks.
Can I have a point of privilege?
We're just recessed, but...
I just wonder if I can get IT help because I can't connect.
Six fifty. Anybody on the line or in the chambers for this item?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We will now, let's see, some changes to this script here. So we're going to close the speakers list now on this item. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing any more from staff or questions. I'm just going to ask staff if you have any closing comments on this item.
No further comments, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Counsel, any questions to staff? Okay, we're going to make a decision then. Somebody move this, please?
I'll move. Counselor Dejanova.
Thank you, Counselor Dejanova, second or...
Counselor Carr.
Counselor Carr, thank you. We're going to move over to the main queue now. Anybody like to debate this one? I don't see anybody on the queue, so I'm going to move, call the vote now. Clerks, I know Counselor Kirby Young was having some trouble with her computer.
I believe IT is on the phone with her mayor.
Hmm. She was off before I called the vote. Just wondering. She didn't miss anything, so I will wait just to see if we can get her back online quickly. She didn't miss any information, so she's still eligible to vote. So I'll just hold off just because it's a tech problem.
Mayor, we just had to power up her desktop. She just needs a few minutes to remote in.
Okay, counsel, so I'll take five minutes. We'll come back at six fifty-seven. That has passed unanimously. Thank you so much. We are going to move on to the next item. Item number two is the removal of Alma Street West Side building line north of West Fourth Avenue. Okay, any conflicts or interest here? Don't hear any? Maybe the clerk will read this. Thanks.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to remove the building line on the west side of Alma Street, north of West Fourth Avenue, fourteen hundred and nineteen hundred blocks of Alma Street. The building line on Alma Street was originally intended to provide wider street right-of-way for transportation and surface utility purposes. As Point Gray Road west of McDonald Street has been reclassified as a local street, this section of Alma Street north of West Fourth Avenue no longer functions as an arterial. Counsel directed staff to review this particular building line, and city staff have determined that the building line can be removed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Six pieces in support, two pieces dealing with other matters of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you so much. All right, counsel, so anybody who wishes to speak to this item, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero code four six four two two hashtag. We have Paul Store from the Transportation Division here, and we do have, I'm just checking, I don't think we have speakers of this council.
Given no speakers, Counselor Carr here, I move to waive the presentation.
Okay, everybody okay with that? Right, okay, we'll move the presentation. Thanks so much. So we'll move right to questions, if staff have any questions on this item. Counselor Hardwick has questions. Counselor Hardwick, please go ahead.
I just have one.
Okay.
What took so, what took so long?
It might be rhetorical, staff have any, any comments on that one?
Good evening, Paul Store, Director of Transportation. Yeah, since we heard from the residents that they were interested in removal of the building line in 2019, we had some good conversations with them and moved it along as quickly as we could once counsel gave us direction to investigate it.
Excellent. Good answer, thank you.
Counselor Wade, go ahead, up to five.
Yeah, quick question. Recognizing that we have seen flash floods in the area, was it contemplated that it would be utilized for service delivery for green infrastructure, or was it seen as not an acceptable place to do green infrastructure down to the beach?
So we looked at the street from a number of perspectives. Green infrastructure is something that we might look at the street for in the future, but given that it's now a local street with, you know, the changes to Point Gray Road, we could re, we could use the street space that's there differently to accommodate things like green infrastructure. So while the additional seven feet that the building line could potentially give us, would give us more flexibility, we believe there's space in the existing right-of-way to accommodate the future needs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Counselor Wade, there's no more questions from counsel to staff, and so I'm going to make my first call for speakers since we have none on the list. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero code four six four twenty-two pound. Any speakers there, clerk?
No speakers, Mayor.
Second call, this, all this information available on Twitter or on the live stream. And of course, you're welcome to come to the chambers. Anybody online or in chambers, clerk?
No speakers, Mayor.
A third time call, all the same information. It is seven oh one, we'll come back at seven oh six to finish this item. See you in five minutes.
No speakers, Mayor.
Great, okay, thanks so much. We're going to close the speakers list. And since we had little or no information after comments after 5:00 PM, we're going to close the receipt of public comments. I'm going to ask the staff if they have any closing comments.
Sorry, no closing comments from staff. Thanks.
Right, thanks. Any questions from counsel to staff? Don't see anybody on the list. Can I have a mover for this, please?
I'd like to move this one, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Counselor.
Happy to second. Counselor Bly.
Okay, Counselor Bly, thank you. Great. And we're over the main queue. Any debate on this? I don't see any. Oh, Counselor Bly, please go ahead.
Thanks, I'll just make the final comment. In just acknowledging and thanking staff for expediting the work on this, it truly was the efforts of the community at this particular small part of a block of Alma who petitioned counsel, I think, since the day we were elected. And it was about two years in that I saw the number of emails and sort of reasonable requests to really understand and so digging into those details. So, you know, I just, I support this, of course, having moved the motion last year and appreciate our role as local government where we have to deal with some really big challenges, and then we get to do this part of the work, which is to respond to the public in terms of a very specific consideration and request, and then we weigh the pros and cons to that, and then we make a decision. So I know that the handful of residents that will be impacted by this decision tonight, if it were to pass, will be very grateful and happy to have participated in that process.
Thanks, Counselor Bly. Counselor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. I, first of all, want to say how pleased I am to see Counselor Hardwick moving the motion and how pleased she is about this. And then, second of all, I really wanted to applaud the residents who were involved. I know that this has been something that although it's come forward this term and right now, it has been a long battle. And by battle, I mean, it really was a smaller group of residents bringing this forward and understanding that they were doing this off the sides of their deaths, people with families as well. And it just reminds me of the quote, "Never underestimate the power of a small group of committed people to change the world." In fact, it is the only thing that ever has by Margaret Mead. So I just wanted to note that because I think that, you know, sometimes we, at public hearings, deal with, you know, larger application. We're talking about, I understand the implications of this also, but I also want to say that I think that it is important that we do encourage smaller groups of residents and neighborhoods and grassroots organizations to be able to move things forward as well. So for that reason, I'm happy to support this and also want to appreciate the work that staff put into this as well as those residents who've worked so hard for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dejanova. Counselor Carr.
Well, if we're into appreciation comment, I would really like to appreciate Counsel Bly. I would really like to appreciate Councilor Bly for her work on this. And I know it had been raised to me previously to this council, but Councilor Bly really did champion this. I took time to arrange meetings between councils and residents, inform us, keep us abreast, move the motion that got staff to investigate it. I'm sorry that it wasn't Councilor Bly that moved this actual final report. That would have been, I think, very fitting because it was her work that led to this. But given that it is what it is, I just want to thank Councilor Bly for really listening to residents, informing us all and, and bringing this forward. And staff for listening and coming through with it.
Thanks so much, Councilor Carr. I don't see anybody else on the list, so I'm gonna go to the votes. There, thanks clerks. There we go. Clerks, if you pull up the result, that is, has been passed unanimously. Thank you so much. And we're on to item three, which is the CD1 rezoning on 357 to 475 West 41st Avenue. And just before we proceed, any member who is in conflict should declare this now. Otherwise, the clerk will read the application.
This is an application by Core Mandel Properties to rezon 357-475 West 41st Avenue from RS1 Residential District, a CD1 comprehensive development district, to permit the development of a 14-story and 22-story mixed-use building with a rooftop amenity floor containing 419 secured market rental units, with 18% of the residential floor area being secured as moderate income units. A height of 72.6 meters and a floor space ratio of 6.3 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in support and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. And this represents all correspondence up until 5:00 p.m. today.
Thanks very much, clerks. Any speakers who want to call in on this item? 1-833-353-8610, code 464-22 pounds. And we have Scott Erdman from the Res zoning Center here. We do have speakers, so perhaps we can go through the slides and then move the questions from council to staff. Please go ahead, staff.
Great, just want to do a sound check first. Can you hear my voice?
Sure can.
And can you see my PowerPoint presentation on your screens?
I can see it on both screens, although on the public screen, it is very small. Clerks, I'm not, just before we proceed, there we go. Okay, we're good. Thanks, we can see it. Please proceed.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Erdman, and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application on 41st Avenue. The site is located at the northwest corner of 41st Avenue and Alberta Street, directly across the street from our rezoning application at 325 to 343 West 41st Avenue, which is the next item in tonight's agenda. The site is zoned RS1 for residential development and is shown in red on the map. Much of the area surrounding this site is also zoned RS1. However, new CD1 zones for mid-rise buildings have been approved in recent years along 41st Avenue. Sites on adjacent blocks have also recently been rezoned for high-density mixed-use developments. The neighborhood is rich in amenities with schools, parks, shopping and services within close proximity. The site is well-served by transit, being located one block away from the Oak Ridge 41st Avenue Canada Line Station and on the route of the R4 Rapid Bus Service along 41st Avenue.
I'm just gonna stop you there. I've noticed the presentation has disappeared from the main screen, and we're just gonna wait for it to come back up before we proceed. There we go. Oh, shrank again. This is all part of us adding to our tech and trying things out. I think we're good. Okay, please continue.
All right. On this site today are eight detached houses. There are seven units rented to tenants, three of whom are eligible for provisions under the tenant relocation and protection policy. There are multiple new mid-rise buildings along 41st Avenue that have been recently built. Oak Ridge Center is one block to the west. Detached houses are on neighboring side streets. And Columbia Park is one block to the south. This site is within the Camby Corridor Plan, which was approved by council in 2018. The intent of the plan is to guide and enable positive change in the Camby Corridor over 30 years and includes a public benefit strategy and public realm plan. This site is located within the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Center. And under the Camby Plan, is anticipated to develop over time into a highly urban place with a variety of mixed uses, vibrant street life and dynamic new public spaces. Along 41st Avenue are the alphabet blocks, A through G, as shown on the map, each with site-specific height limits and with density based on urban design performance. This site is identified as Area B. Rezoning can be considered for projects that propose either 100% secured rental or a combination of social housing and strata. In some sites, the ground floor is required to be active commercial, while for others, choice of use between commercial or residential is permitted. Any lift in land value for each project is to be redirected into delivering improved affordability. This diagram illustrates the scale of development anticipated by the plan for this site. Developments can include a major tower up to 22 stories and a minor tower up to 14 stories above a six-story podium and with active commercial uses on the ground floor. Additional height for common rooftop amenity spaces can be considered. The proposal before you tonight is for a 22-story building and a 14-story building over a shared six-story podium with ground floor commercial uses. A common indoor and outdoor rooftop amenity space is proposed and a density of 6.32 FSR. 419 secured rental housing units are proposed. As a result of negotiating the land value lift and CAC, 18% of the floor area, or approximately 64 units, will be secured as moderate income rental units. The application also meets the family room requirements for both the market rental and the MRR units. The application was received in July of 2019 and later revised in October of the same year. The original application contained only market rental units, and so processing time was extended for negotiation of delivering MRR units as the CAC. If approved, this project would generate over 1,500 off-site and onsite construction jobs. Regarding the affordability of the proposed rental units, this table shows the average starting rents and the average household income served for both the below-market and market rental units for newer buildings on the west side. It also shows the costs associated with home ownership, including monthly costs and how much would be needed for a minimum 10% down payment. The below-market and market rental units provide a more affordable housing alternative to home ownership for more than half of Vancouver's population. A city-hosted open house was held as an in-person event prior to COVID-19. Staff have received a total of five responses for this application. Feedback included support for the proposed built form and for the inclusion of rental housing and retail spaces. Concerns included comments regarding the built form and that too much parking was proposed. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that the proposal meets the intended built form for this site under the plan. Conditions have been included to further improve the design of the proposal. The public benefits delivered by this application include 419 secured rental units with 18% of the floor area, or approximately 64 units, secured for moderate income rental units in addition to a DCL payment and public art contribution. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Camby Corridor Plan and the proposed height, density, form and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated for this location. This proposal includes 419 secured rental housing units, including 64 moderate income rental units. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Great. And before we move on to questions, let's hear from the applicant team first. Did you have anything you wanted to say to council or just here to answer questions?
Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Capina from Core Mandel Properties, and I'm here with our project architect, Gwyn Vos from IBI Group. This application will significantly increase the amount of much-needed secured rental housing stock, including moderate income rental units. It will serve the city well as they're situated close to transit and many public and private amenities in the Oak Ridge area. We applaud the effort of this council working with all orders of government and the private sector to respond to the urgent housing needs. And we note the council's most recent decisions through the Vancouver Plan Update and Quick Start Actions Report and support the changes that council's made to the Moderate Income Housing Pilot Program. These changes are significant to rental projects like ours and will help this project be financially viable in the long term as we move forward in an escalating cost environment. This, this particular project was referred to public hearing prior to council's motion to allow MRR rates to be inflated until first occupancy. And we are requesting that our application be amended to reflect council's recent update to the MRR policy. In consultation with staff, they had indicated that this change would be consistent with current council policy. We have nothing further to present at this time, but we're available to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We do have a number of councillors with questions to staff or the applicant. Councilor Kirby Young, you're up first for five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. I'll follow up on, on that to the applicant. And I was gonna ask a question like that because this is not specifically a MRR project, but is MRR-like, if you will. And so, further to your comment with respect to the amended the policy to allow for pace of rents in conjunction with inflation prior to commencement of the project. Can you speak specifically to, in more wholesome terms, as to what difference that would make to the project, specifically from a, from a renter's point of view? Can you hear me?
Sorry, was that question to the applicant?
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, it's faint. Sorry, can, can you repeat the question? I'm sorry, I, we missed the first part of that.
Sure, I have limited time, but the, with respect to your comments around the changes that were made to the MRR, sort of project to the development by law and respecting that this is not a MRR project, but is MRR-like, can you speak in more detail as to what difference the project that this would make if those rates were allowed to pace with inflation for the amendment?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So, so the, the MRR agreements were set in 2017. And, you know, we're now in 2021. The expected completion of this project is, you know, somewhere in the kind of area of 2024. Those rates, our understanding under the previous policy, would stay at the 2017 rates. Our understanding of the new policy is that a project is permitted to inflate by, or raise the rents by inflation up until the first occupancy. You know, obviously, you know, we're, we're in an escalating cost environment. You know, we see increases in, in construction costs, property taxes, city fees. You know, another big item, if any of you are on the Metro Vancouver Board, you obviously know about the additional costs associated with the Iona wastewater treatment plant. So really, we look at this as a way to sort of catch up on some of the costs, given that, you know, this project is, is still a number of years away from completion.
Let me ask the question a different way from the renter's point of view. Would it impact, because I realize, again, it's not a MRR project, but is MRR-like, would it impact the number of units or the affordability that can be offered on those units without an amendment to that effect?
Without an amendment, we, sorry, I don't think of how to answer that most clearly. Yeah, yeah, the, the prices will increase slightly for, for the renters. But we believe that the building will be better off as a result of, as an owner, a long-term owner, the ability to, to cover costs and reinvest in the building.
Anything else to add on that?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then if I can follow up to staff. Does staff see any, would it be helpful for council to give direction if they want to pursue that amendment like that, to give it some direction during amendment?
Hi, Councilor Dan Garrison, Assistant Director for Housing Policy and Regulation. Certainly to change the terms, what it would be is a, is a minor amendment to the terms of the housing agreement, which currently, the applicant was correct, currently doesn't allow any inflation on those rents from the original 2017 MRR program rents up until occupancy. So it would, we would require a motion to be moved with a minor amendment to the housing agreement conditions that would just simply allow inflation by the, by the RTA inflationary annual allowable increases, which would be consistent with the policy that council adopted, the amendment to the MRR policy that council adopted in July.
And so from staff's point of view, a quick follow-up, then that would be equitable in terms of a consistent application across projects? Would that be, would that be a fair statement?
It certainly would be consistent with the amendments that, that council did make, and, and it was part of staff's presentation in July, certainly to reflect the fact that costs are increasing and are impacting the take-up of the, of the moderate income rental programs. So we think it would be consistent with policy.
Okay. And at the time, I know that staff felt that that, that participation, is that right?
We're just at the five.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, staff.
Councilor Dejanova up to five minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll take myself off the queue. One of my questions was asked.
Great, okay. Councilor Swanson up to five. Councilor Swanson, you might be on mute.
There. Is this gonna be a pet-friendly building for the applicant?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, it will be a pet-friendly building.
Okay, good. Are you planning on seeking or getting, do you have any funding commitments, financing commitments from senior governments?
We're still early in the process. We do not have current financing determined.
So if you got financing from senior governments, would you increase the amount of affordability?
At, at this point, we believe that the number of affordable units is, is about right for the, the mix of the building in terms of creating a, a long-term successful asset.
Okay. And so the amendment you're seeking is the amendment so that you can escape from vacancy control, is that it?
No, no. Our understanding of the motion that was passed, so the, these homes would still be included or would, still would have vacancy control. So future tenants, when they move out, the rent will not reset. What this motion does is increase the starting rents from 2017 by, by the RTA inflation number up until first occupancy.
But you'd still have vacancy control?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thanks. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councilor Swanson. We've got up next, Councilor Boyle.
Thanks. Actually, that question about vacancy control was, was what I wanted to ask too, so. That's all for me.
Thanks, Councilor Weave.
Yeah, my question's to staff on this proposed amendment. Was the performer to look at the 18% MRR determination? Was the pro forma to look at the eighteen percent MRR determined, recognizing that they would be at twenty seventeen rate?
Staff?
Uh, yes, thank you, Dan Garrison, Housing Policy. Yes, the, the pro forma that was analyzed, uh, that came up with the, um, and landed at the current requirement that's in the report, did assume the twenty seventeen rates. So certainly, an amendment, um, like the one the applicant is seeking, would be beneficial to the project from a financial perspective compared to what was, uh, agreed at the, uh, at the time. Uh, I think the, the point the applicant is making is that, um, is, is the point around cost escalation in the, in the rental market for a number of reasons, the cost of operating rental buildings. And so they're seeking, um, similar, a similar decision from council that council made in July around allowing some inflationary escalation to offset those costs.
However, that was determined in staff's recommendation. Uh, my second would be, yeah. The Alberta Street Greenway, does this, it doesn't showcase an easement on the east side of this building? Is that not needed for that component of that connection from the little mountain to Big River? Along Alberta?
Councillor Wade, this is Scott Urban from Planning. My understanding is that an easement is not being sought and that the, the conditions that are outlined in Appendix B of the report satisfy what's currently estimated to be the, the scope for a future Greenway and that any additional details will be worked out at later stages of development. So no, no need to, uh, to amend the proposal.
Even though there's a proposed Greenway there, we don't, we're not looking for an easement and we're hoping to make it work at a future date, is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. That, uh, it's expected to, to, uh, to be able to land that within the, the, the current easements of Alberta Street without having to ask for additional space.
Okay, in the past, we've seen sometimes the community amenity component in evaluation in a dollar amount. Do we know how much CACs we have waived to get the eighteen percent MRR?
Councillor Wade, that seems to be a question that's bigger than this, uh, single proposal, so more like a
I mean, for me, it's either we got CAC of a certain amount so that we know, or we're getting the eighteen percent. So it'd be nice to know what is the evaluation of the eighteen percent so that the public understands what the trade-off is we're voting on today.
On this project?
On this project.
Okay. Uh, staff, any, any thoughts there?
Mario Lee with, uh, Real Estate Services. We don't have a specific number for the CAC for this project. The below-market rentals was proposed by the applicant and we reviewed it as that proposal. Um, and we did not review the actual CAC number.
But in calculating that the eighteen percent was acceptable as a pro forma, instead of going to twenty percent, which was our MRR, we must have had some valuation that the twenty percent would not make the pro forma work.
Correct.
Is that not correct?
Yes, when they inputted the, when we inputted the eighteen percent of the below-market rentals into the pro forma, it yielded a, uh, a, a nominal land lift basically to, to make it reasonable that the eighteen percent was compensating for the rezoning.
Okay, so what was that land lift that would have been there if it wasn't, if it's at zero percent? It must have been calculated during that.
We would not look at it for, at, at a zero percent, uh, land value. It would be as they had proposed, which is the eighteen percent at this point.
Okay, I'm struggling recognizing that if you're going to create an eighteen percent, you would know the valuation.
Well, I don't have, I mean, I could slip in zero percent into the pro forma and yield the number, but I don't have that number with me, um, at the moment. Again, when we, when we review the proposal, it is proposed as, uh, a project with below-market rentals.
Okay, maybe that's something I'll ask in the future because I think it's helpful for the public to understand what is the trade-off we're making when we're looking for MRR permits per door. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Councillor Kerr? Thank you councillor Frye and councillor Dejanova.
Great, thanks so much, Mayor. Um, I actually have one of the same questions that councillor Wade asked. We used to have, at all these proposals where CACs were waived, an actual listing in the report of what the value of the CACs were. In other words, what value was waived in order to get a public benefit in terms of a certain kind of housing? Can you tell me when that policy or when that practice of including the actual CAC amounts changed?
Kind of right on the edge, but, uh, staff? Any thoughts?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure exactly. Uh, this kind of predates my, uh, my time here and I'm, I'm not exactly sure when that would have changed.
Okay. Okay, I, I under, understand your, your position. I will pursue this at some other time, um, because I think it is important. What are the number of units, um, that will have vacancy control?
The applicant or the staff?
Whoever can answer that question, Mayor.
Okay, try applicant first.
There are sixty-four MRR units that will be vacancy controlled.
Sixty-four, that's great, thank you. I noticed that, um, there are three hundred and seventy-two car spaces and four hundred and nineteen secured rental spaces. It's like a very high percentage of car spaces, um, and it's right by transit, Skytrain. I'm wondering why the percentage, or sorry, why the number of car spaces is so high?
In, in fairness, so you saw the data, this application, it's, it's been a, quite a long, long road. I think in twenty nineteen, I think we had a bit of a different outlook already from, from cars. We've been in discussions with staff about potentially reducing that down through the development permit stage. We, we acknowledge that that's probably overparked for, for this number of units. So as we move through the next step of approvals, if, if we move to the next step of approvals, we'd likely be reducing that number.
Okay, it's not yet a condition of approval though, right, to reduce it?
Our understanding is not.
No, no, I, I read the condition. I didn't see it in the conditions of approval. And, uh, so thank you. I'd appreciate, um, knowing that that is something that is going to be pursued. And finally, on a condition of approval, I noticed that, um, there are thirty-six trees on site that are all going to, um, be cut down, they won't be retained, and forty new trees will be planted. Are those on-site? And, um, I'm particularly interested in, um, the information that you might have around the climate resiliency of the trees that are going to be planted, if that is a requirement, they're climate resilient.
So, uh, many of those will, um, they'll exist on the ground plane, but also on the extensive rooftop decks. We, we have a preliminary landscape plan, um, but as we move through our development permit, we'll do a detailed design. We'll be working with our landscape architects, arborists, and, and taking advice from the city on the appropriate species to, to ensure we, we maximize that.
That's great. There's a lot of work at Metro Vancouver too on, on appropriate species, um, for, for, uh, arborists and practitioners in terms of climate change. So, um, anyway, appreciate hearing that. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Frye?
Yeah, thanks. Um, this is maybe an unusual question, so I'm hoping, uh, the developer and staff are certainly welcome to answer as well. It's an unusual question, but I think it's also unusual to have, uh, two projects back-to-back in the same public hearing with the same developer, same architect, uh, in the same, uh, just across the street from each other, same urban plans, delivering, um, vacancy-controlled affordable rental as part of rental projects. So I'm curious, uh, because we hear often that, um, the inclusionary zoning component becomes complicated because of finishes and port doors and those different factors. I'm curious if there was ever a consideration around, um, because this is such a significant amount of development and, and different buildings and everything, actually segregating them out by buildings rather than inserting them in buildings. And if that was a consideration, um, did it pencil out? Or was it a matter of we don't have the flexibility, uh, to allow that kind of thing in our programs?
Is this to staff?
Well, I guess it's to developer and to staff.
Right, and so, so the question is, was, why wasn't this all packaged together as one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm curious if, if, if there would have been an opportunity to do this more efficiently for the developer to achieve more affordability, uh, given the scale of and number of projects that are involved here.
Okay, uh, over the developer first, applicant?
Yeah, so I, I think, um, to, to answer your question about the separate projects, so I guess legally, as they are separate lots with a dividing street, they, they had to be separate. You know, I, again, um, I think probably part of our reason is, is, you know, is they also are separate properties. You know, our stance is they, they do sort of live on their own in terms of self-supporting, in terms of, um, owning an asset that has not only non-market units, but, but market units to, to potentially support some of the operating offset. You know, and in our opinion, we, we, we like the idea of mixing it. You know, the, the non-market housing units will, um, function just the same as the market housing units. They'll have access to the same lobbies, the same amenities. We truly believe that sort of that inclusionary style of housing is, is, is the best model. So that's why we made our decision.
That's great. That's really great to hear. All right, that's it for me then.
Okay, next councillor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. Um, Mayor Stewart, I do have a question, but I'm wondering, as we are in a quasi judicial lobby, are we allowed to talk about another project that hasn't been considered yet in consideration of this project? Or is that of this application? Or is that allowed or not? I'm sorry. I had a question too, but I don't want to ask it if it's not allowed.
I, I think you're, uh, I think that's a good point you're making there. Uh, they are both on the public agenda. Well, let's see what your question is and I'll think
Oh, no, I have another question on top of that question, but I, you know what, I'm using my time, I'm trying to use it wisely and not trying to, I, I, I just want to know if I should ask, like, is it allowed?
I got your point.
Maybe you can get back to me on that one while I ask the other question. The other question is, um, councillor Wade had, had very well brought up and appreciated him bringing up the CAC versus sort of the eighteen percent. And I'm just wondering if maybe, uh, you know, there, there could be some, some more information shared with us on how this is going to affect the end price. Because also understanding and hoping I didn't have to ask questions because they were all getting answered. But how does this affect the market rental price when we require the applicant to pay above and beyond? So for instance, uh, paying above and beyond a DCL, um, you know, CACs on secured market rental? Just wondering how that's going to impact the end cost and ultimately, if this continues, the market rents in this neighborhood throughout the city of Vancouver.
Applicant or staff?
Um, I, I'd like to hear from the applicant as to how they feel that affects their pro forma, if they feel that they have to pass that on to the end consumer.
Over the applicant.
Councillor Dejanova, could you please, um, repeat the question? It was, it, I, I understand quickly you're asking, how does the, uh, providing the non-market units affect the, uh, rent that we, would you be charging for the market units?
It's not specifically that. It was more to the question that you had answered to councillor Wade. He had specifically asked about the eight, you know, his example of eighteen percent or a CAC. But the CAC or the amount that the city does put on, we have policy and there's a reason for that, that affects your pro forma and you have to pass those costs down, is that correct? I'm just, I, I want, I want some, some idea on whether or not, you know, as we look at the rents that you're charging, is that built into your rent? It has to be, right, into your pro forma? Then our charges at the city have to kind of trickle down, is that correct?
Yes, I, um, I can't give you a specific number, but, but of course they do. You know, um, operating costs are fairly, um, consistent across, uh, market and non-market units. You, you have the same, um, costs in general, maybe some are slightly variable, but most are fixed. So, uh, not only, uh, would you maybe have to make up more in rent, but you're also covering probably a higher proportion of operating costs for the non-market units.
Okay, so that relaxation in a sense, and I'm just gonna try and be brief with this, allows you to offer more flexibility, um, to offer these market units, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, sorry if it was so complicated. I had a number of questions here, but I'm good for now. And if, if, miss, I'm sorry, Mayor Stewart, if, uh, if and when you have that information, if you could get back to me, uh, that would be great in case
I think you're right. I don't, I don't think I should have allowed the question.
No, 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 I'm not asking that. It's just, then I won't ask my question. So thank you for that information. I'll leave it there until the next project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hey, council, that is it from questions. Uh, now we're going to, uh, hear from the public. Same numbers, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, uh, four six four two two pound. Uh, the number is to phone in and we have, um, first speaker is, uh, we have eight, uh, requests to speak. Uh, Maximilian Leeper is first.
Hello?
Hi there. I have up to five minutes, uh, to speak to council. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hello, councillor Mayor Stewart. My name is Maximilian. I'm a youth residing in the city of Vancouver and I'm calling before you today just to voice my support of this project. Uh, so right off the bat, I wanted to, uh, just note that I do frequent this area a lot. I've seen this project be underway for several years now with the derelict building still occupying West Forty-first, uh, Major Street. And I wanted to thank Core Mandel Properties for submitting this application and development as I think it will ameliorate the neighborhood, uh, whilst providing a sustainable and community benefiting development. So I've looked into this project and I see that it's a hundred percent rental with a number of moderate rental income units being provided as a CAC, which as a youth in our city, I greatly appreciate. And, uh, I know that whilst we're doing this, it does fit into the Canby Corridor Plan that the local community has been consulted by. So I, I really appreciate that they've managed to fit this project into those, uh, performance requirements. And not to mention, you know, employment is a big thing and this jo, this project will provide fifteen hundred jobs during construction, uh, both directly and indirectly, uh, which is great for our local economy. And once complete, it will have commercial on the ground floor along Forty-first and Alberta, uh, which is great for our local economy and to be able to walk and create a livable city. Speaking of that, the project is right by a major Skytrain station, um, which we greatly appreciate. And I know previous councils have brought up the parking. And, uh, I do agree that perhaps there is a lot of parking being provided, an abundant amount, concerning that it's right by the Cannon Line Skytrain Station. And, uh, the local community is able to service residents with requirements through the Oak Ridge Centre Mall, uh, which this building is just a few blocks away from. So for those reasons, I, I would support this and I urge council to vote in favor, um, and allow the development to begin and the replacement of these single-family homes to begin, uh, which are not heritage, uh, I do know that. So it will reduce an eyesore whilst providing the necessary building that'll meet our rental requirements. Thank you both, and have a great day.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I'm just checking, I don't see any questions from council, so we're going to move on to the next, uh, speaker. We've got, the next speaker is, uh, Arsalan Shigun.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Sure can. Uh, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Uh, thank you. Hello, everybody. I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak before you today. I want to voice my support for, for these, for both the developments really. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea for the area. Um, I think it's a great alternative to just letting these, uh, ancient, single-family dwellings stand. I've actually been driving by this area quite a bit because my cousin goes to, uh, she's at Langara right now. I'm sure if there was something like this around there. I'm sure if there was something like this around there, they would be, uh, highly incentivized to, to live closer rather than living across town. I think the, uh, the moderate income rental units are very important for, uh, just Vancouver in general and, uh, where we're headed as well. And, uh, I just, I think it's a great development, it's a great idea and it represents what, uh, what Vancouver is heading towards or should be heading towards. Um, it's imperative for livability and for like youth in Vancouver like myself that are sort of struggling to, to get by, I mean, being, uh, being closer to a school or a destination would help a lot. That's, uh, that's pretty much it.
Thank you for calling in. Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we're, we're going to move to the next speaker. Uh, but thanks for calling in tonight. Uh, speaker number three is, uh, Natasha Lete- Letec.
Hi there, my name's Natasha Letec. Um, I too am calling in support of this project. I'm someone with a growing young family who likes the idea of being close to accessible transit on a main route. Um, and this project looks like something that my family and I have been seeking and we're hoping that it will be approved and available sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you from council, uh, so we're going to move on to the next speaker, but thanks so much for calling in. Uh, council, the next speaker, speaker number four is registered, is, uh, Isakane Guramell? Isakane Guramell, speaker number four.
Hi Mayor, can you guys hear me?
Sure can, please go ahead, up to, uh, five minutes.
Thank you, um, hi Mayor and staff again. Um, I will be speaking about both projects, but we'll speak once as I have shared views for both projects. Uh, my name is John Guramell and I'm twenty-three years old. I have been a resident of Vancouver for fifteen years and I support the development and density of this project will improve, rejuvenate and urbanize the local economy with the new rental, you know, and slash hotel and business accommodations that it will bring. I also have driven here many times and to drop off my girlfriend at Linger College. And the West and the East projects are perfect for this area, I believe, as it is both super close to core downtown and the middle point between downtown and Richmond. Um, with the B line and the Rapid Bus serving this area, along with the Skytrain serving it. So with development and Linger College, I think it is about time that we urbanize and densify the areas. With sufficient parking stalls and bike parking spaces, there won't be an issue with having tower residents parking on the street sides and clogging neighborhood streets. Um, I heard this from previous other rezonations that this would have been an issue, but this is plenty of parking. Um, I believe this development will not only add value to the residents living there, but also economically support the nearby major businesses, like the redeveloping Oak Ridge Centre Shopping Mall, but also the immense surrounding development. Um, it's good to see that affordable rental units are included as it is very close to Linger College. Therefore, a handful of students can make use of the rental units along with other catchment schools nearby. In general, there has not been enough rental housing built in our city for a long time and with this development coming through, these new units will help to keep our youth and workers in our city with the prices of core downtown rising. Um, therefore, I am in favor for these developments and thank you for your time, Mayor and staff and callers.
Thank you so much. Uh, councillor Hardwick, you have questions up to five minutes.
Uh, I just, again, as I'm listening to all this, do you, do you work in the, um, housing production industry and property development and construction?
Uh, speaker? Perhaps he's, uh, left the line, councillor Hardwick?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, next we have, uh, Rachel Jang.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name's Rachel and I would like to also voice support for this, um, project. My ex-boyfriend used to live in the area when I was there a lot, especially with the developments going on with Oak Ridge Mall. I thought it'd be great to have more housing around there, especially because I'm a young person that needs to find housing soon in the coming years. So yes, I would just like to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I don't see any questions from council for you, so we'll move on to speaker number six, who is, uh, Tuba Sanmez.
Speaker six is not on the line, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Speaker seven is withdrawn, so we have, uh, speaker number eight, Rocky Zhao. Rocky Zhao, speaker number eight.
Speaker eight is not on the line, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. So we'll have our first call for speakers. Uh, anybody like to speak to this, uh, the numbers are available on Twitter and on the live stream. Um, and, uh, I'll just check with the clerks after the first call, is there anybody on the line or in the chambers?
No speakers, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Second call, same thing, it's, uh, one eight, sorry, I put my glasses on here, uh, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero four six four two two pound. Second call, anybody there, clerks?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thanks. So third call, council, it is seven fifty-six, so we will come back at eight oh one, uh, to finish this item, so we'll see you in five minutes.
Mayor, speaker six is now on the line.
Okay, uh, we have Tu- uh, Tuba Sanmez, uh, on the line, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Hi there, um, my name is Tuba Sanmez, I'm twenty-four years old. Um, I've been a resident of Vancouver for a little over nine years now. Um, I wanted to call in because I do support this development. Um, I believe that it will help develop the area that can be and provide much-needed affordable housing. Um, the project is very close to Linger College also, which is where I went to school. And I believe that this development would also benefit the students who would like to rent closer to the school and still be somewhat closer downtown and, um, be able to get everywhere they want. Um, I believe it's also very close to Kanda Line, which will also allow for a more affordable and environmentally friendly living. Um, I personally don't drive and I take, um, transit everywhere, so I think it's a very big plus that it's close to the Skytrain. Um, another thing that I really like about it is that the ground level will be for business and services, which I think will really help the local economy and revitalize the community there. Um, yeah, overall, I believe this is a great project and thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
Okay, thanks. Um, don't see any questions from council for you, so just thank you for calling in tonight and, uh, I'm going to ask the clerk if there's anybody else on the line or in the chambers.
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, we're now going to close the, uh, close the speakers list and we'll close the receipt of public comments and I'll just ask the applicant, uh, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, no further comments, thank you.
Thank you. Staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you.
Okay, uh, does council have any questions for staff, uh, councillor Kirby Young?
Uh, no, I don't have questions, Mayor. I was going to move the motion, so I'll, I'll wait till after councillor Hardwick.
Okay, councillor Hardwick, please go ahead. Questions for staff? Are you on mute, maybe?
Thank you, yes, just switch it around. Thank you, um, can you confirm to me that the moderate income rental units are targeting households earning between the thirty thousand and eighty thousand dollar per year spread that we, I'm look, I'm looking at the definition here.
Uh, staff?
Uh, hi councillor, Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. Uh, yeah, that's generally the income range that, uh, that we are targeting. Um, if you apply the thirty percent, uh, uh, benchmark, uh, for affordability on the studio units, we don't quite get down as low as thirty thousand a year, but that's generally the threshold that we're targeting.
And this, uh, this range and this definition is, is, uh, still under review by staff?
Uh, uh, y- yes, I mean, we are, we did review and have a look at the moderate income rental housing, uh, pilot program and we made some recommendations in July. We will be, um, doing some further implementation of the program and then looking at a, at a more fulsome review, um, following that.
But we're still looking at a range between thirty and eighty thousand?
That's the case, I mean, there would, the, yes, it is. The, the re- the rents and the rel- and the related incomes for the moderate income rental housing pilot program were set in twenty seventeen and they were, uh, relative to incomes and looking at incomes particularly that weren't well-served in the market. Uh, and so, uh, we will be looking as, you know, this year coming up is going to be the year with the release of new census data, there will be new income data out. Um, so we, we will be reviewing those numbers going forward because it's, uh, uh, difficult to run housing programs where the parameters are set in stone as, as the market is moving, as costs are moving, so we will be looking at, but that will be part of a, a review based on, uh, data.
I just bring it up because I know there's other councillors that have also been, uh, questioning these definitions and so I think it's important that we continue to, to shine a light on it, but thank you for your answer.
I agree.
Councillor Weave?
Uh, yeah, first question is to, uh, talking about the Alberta Blue Green Street again. Um, I'm wondering why, recognizing we have both projects on both sides of the street, all we're asking for is an eight-foot cement sidewalk, recognizing that the normal blue systems that we're looking for uh, need a significant more setback as well as blue-green infrastructure. In past, when you look at the public amenities in the Canby corridor, it shows a much different picture than is being delivered here. So can you talk about the differential between what the public is thinking is coming and what is being delivered by these projects?
Let's just stick to the one project for now as.
One project.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi there, this is Scott Urban from Planning. Um, yeah, I can confirm that the, the proposals, um, meet the intent of the Canby Corridor Public Realm Plan as, as far as setbacks, um, for, for that intersection of Forty First Avenue and Alberta Street. Um, I don't have any further details regarding the, the future Blue Greenway, um, along the Alberta Street corridor, but, but staff can follow up with that with you later if that would be helpful.
It would be, I mean, it is in, when you look at online, what is under the amenity plan for the Canby corridor, it does show a beautiful pathway and it does say in some of this, a park connector and it's a bit more than just eight street, eight-foot sidewalk. My second one is we look at the, uh, normal amenities of a six-to-ten-story building, we get about a hundred and twelve dollars per square foot as a predetermined CAC, which would value this at thirty to fifty million. Can you talk about why we don't think this building can deliver more than the eighteen percent and meet our regular threshold of twenty, which is normally low to begin with, or meeting the MRRP? Why, why don't we think this building can hit the twenty percent, which is what we were trying to achieve prior?
This is Mario Lee with Real Estate Services, we review these, these proposals on a case-by-case basis when it's under negotiated. So there are specific characteristics of the site that would make this proposal not be able to hit the twenty percent as the other MRRP policy projects are.
And what would those characteristics be?
Uh, it's hard to pinpoint the, the, all the characteristics, but we would look at and review items like the cost of development, site challenges, the cost of the base land value, the height and density that is allowable for this project compared to others.
Okay, because this one is sizably more higher than, more density than other ones have been able to achieve. And so I'm just wondering, what are the critical elements, recognizing the next project is even less? So what are the elements that aren't allowing this to hit the twenty percent would be helpful?
Yeah, it's, like, like I mentioned, the items that would be included in our pro forma review would be items like the cost to develop, the, the particular challenges of the site, and also, again, the height and density. I'm not sure which sites you would be referring to as a comparison.
Other, other MRRP projects that we've seen, it's just difficult because we're looking at voting on what the percentage would be, but I don't have data on what are the issues to not allow this to be over twenty percent? So what are the characteristics of this project that aren't allowing it?
As mentioned, it would, for this particular proposal, it would be the height, the density in this, in this particular location, and also the, the cost of the, the land, the base land value.
At assessed value or purchase value?
It would be valued as is currently base, as, as the base zoning as an RS1, not, not the purchase value.
Which would be pretty low since these were RS properties. Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm just struggling with the valuation, if you'd like more information, thank you, it's on my clock.
Councillor Carr, up to five?
Yeah, thank you, I would just like to pursue, again, the question that I asked previously around the number of parking units. And I did get an answer saying that, that staff would look at that. I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have a amendment to this set of recommendations requiring a condition of approval be the actual reduction in the number of parking units here.
Thank you for the question councillor Carr, regarding parking spaces, this site is eligible for reductions under the Vancouver Parking Bylaw based on their close proximity to rapid transit. And so typically, the exact number of parking spaces would be evaluated and reviewed at the development permit stage. And the applicant would be eligible to, to apply for reductions. And also, it would be based on discussions around the, the TDM measures, the Transportation Development Management, measures which would also allow them to pursue further reductions at the development permit stage.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, and the applicant did say that they would be looking at that. I'm just wondering if it's a helpful process to require a reduction in terms of a condition of approval, a, a reduction in the number of parking spaces?
I, I would suggest it may not be necessary, just based on current practice of examining these figures at, at the development permit stage and looking for opportunities for reductions anyways, based on existing parking bylaw eligible reductions and based on site-specific TDM measures.
Okay, so you're gonna do that, that will be part of the ongoing process, all right, I'm gonna count on you to do that. My second question is, how do we know as council whether or not, when you achieve some reduction in the number of parking units, whether that will translate into a decreased cost of the units, which means like a decreased rent on the units? We're all told that the number of, or the cost of a parking stall is, I don't know, forty to sixty thousand dollars and that if there is not as much parking required, that that can lead to lower rents or the lower cost of housing. So how do we track as council whether or not that in fact results? So if you manage to get the, you know, fewer parking units, that, that could translate into an, either an increase in affordability or an increase in number of affordable units?
I, I don't believe that a specific reduction in rents based on a reduction in parking spaces is, is tracked. Rents are based on what the market may, may, may ask for at that time.
Okay, I think it's something we need to be sure if you're there or not in this public hearing, but thanks for your answers.
Thank you.
Councillor Nishova, questions to staff?
Sorry, I was double muted there, my questions to staff are, are regarding the height and density. If, if the height and density wasn't what is being proposed right now and that we are being asked to consider here at this public hearing, would we see either higher rents or the project be unviable based on the pro forma? Including the nonprofit unit or non-market unit, sorry?
Uh, the, the height and, and density is based on the, on the planning policy of the, of the Camby Corridor Plan. And essentially, what we've received as a proposal meets the intents of the plan. And so those maximums around heights are, are, are already met. And then with density, it's a site-specific urban design performance.
I understand that it meets our policy or else you wouldn't be recommending it. I'm, I'm, I appreciate that, just to follow up to that if the mayor will allow, is, if, you know, I, I've heard questions from some councillors if it was possible to remove parking spaces, I understand that parking spaces also are attached, especially considering, you know, there are policies that could play into this. Sure, if maybe someone's not muted, Mayor Stewart, I heard some feedback on my line here, can I continue?
Please do.
Okay, thanks, I'm, I'm just wondering, considering a policy that, that, there's no policy grandfathered in this, other policies could possibly apply that come forward to the city of Vancouver and understanding that parking stalls also help with off-street parking and not need, having the need for that considering other questions. This pro forma right now not only meets our policy, but if the FSR, if the height or the density were to be amended by council, the pro forma could possibly not work, is that true? Is it true that if council were to put certain conditions on this, I can't ask the applicant, as we only have a one, one shot to ask them questions, but this may not work for the applicant if council was to move forward with amendments, is that correct?
Thank you for the question councillor, so the, the application that we have before us was based on, on the plan and, you know, the applicant proceeding with the, with the understanding for them that it's a, it's a viable project. So a, a reduction in height and density would ultimately affect their pro forma. It would be up to the, the applicant to, to respond to those specific details, but it's, it's safe to assume that yes, a, a reduction would affect the viability and the financial performance of their, of their pro forma.
Okay, thank you very much, that's, that's the only question that I have at this point, the others have been answered.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby Young, questions for staff?
No, mayor, seeing you all for the questions, I'm happy to move the recommendation and then.
Thank you much.
Thank you councillor Nishova.
Great, okay, thank you, and we'll move this over to the queue.
Right, and I do have an amendment, I'll put myself back on the queue, if I'd like.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I sent this into the clerk, so I sent them all bringing up on the screen and it's part of the discussion that took place tonight and the recognition that this is not a MRRP project specifically, but MRRP like. And we do have the benefit of having the additional affordable units included with vacancy control, but with respects to being equitable with respects to the policy changes that council passed earlier in July that staff had referenced, that does allow pacing and change for inflation prior to the opening of the building and recognizing sort of the timing of this project, it, it simply proposes that this project be enabled to have that same adjustment on pacing for inflation, consistent with a council policy that was taken earlier this summer. And so specifically, the amendment is to condition two-point-one-two-F on page sixteen of eighteen in appendix B and it simply removes the word "not", so that inflationary adjustment can take place.
Okay.
Mayor?
Point of privilege?
I cannot see the amendment, oh, there it is, sorry, thank you, finally.
Oh, and it disappeared again, so we have been, I'm having a little trouble with the orange screen. Just get the clerks to... See if we can pull that up, I'll stop your timer here.
Mayor, it's the clerk, we're just having some IT issues with the broadcast.
Okay, it, it seems that when you pull up the screen that shows the councillor, you lose the main screen, that's, that's all I've noticed. Just checking here. Pull that up, clerks. Okay, it's up now. Anything else you wanted to say councillor Kirby Young on this one?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the spirit of the amendment is sort of equating consistency with the policy, but also ensuring that, you know, rental housing is stable and well-maintained and secure quality housing for people all the time. And so that's, that's really the spirit of the amendment.
Okay, thanks, do we have a second or for this? Second or?
Mayor, I'm happy to second, but I don't know that I can now that I left, I had to go help my daughter.
You can't actually.
I just came off of mute to second the amendment, mayor, it's councillor.
Okay, thanks, so we're on amendment queue, do people want to speak to this? Councillor Nishova?
Thanks very much, I have a point of information for staff.
Please go ahead.
Uh, thanks, through you, Mayor Stewart, to staff. I understand this, this takes out the "not" of the subject to, so it's not subject to, and instead it is subject to adjustments. And I understand that actually through the city's policies, that in the past month, I think it's by the end of this month, there are certain projects that may have been in the queue already that have passed rezoning, that are now subject to new policies that councils pass, including CACs that now apply to rental, to artist studios, to nonprofit developments. And I share this example because I'm asking if taking out the "not" in this could actually subject it to any policy that council could possibly pass that falls within the realm of an adjustment of three-point-one-A, so whatever council decided it could be and thus not make the pro forma work any longer. And I've been in this situation on the other side of it, so I'm just asking you if this is, I can't ask the applicant at this point, I'm wondering if you might be able to comment on this, if that's a risk of this amendment?
Over to staff? Thoughts on this amendment?
Mayor Stafford is discussing, one moment please.
Okay, thank you.
Pause my clock, Mayor Stewart, I hope I don't need the five minutes, but if we're waiting?
Yeah, I, I, I kinda consider it part of the time.
Oh, okay, I thought we were waiting for staff to come on the line, so.
No, they're, they're discussing the, because it, it's a new thing, we can always have two rounds of questions if you need it.
Thank, thanks so much, I'm hoping I don't, but thank you.
Hi, Mayor Stewart, I, I can attempt to answer the questions, this is Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. Our interpretation of this is that it is specific to the section of, of the Development Cost Levy Bylaw that specifically outlines the adjustments that, that can be made to rents that are secured in the, in the housing agreement for securing those waivers. And so, in, in this case with that, with, when in the housing agreement, we would be, it specifically references RTA adjustments to the, to the rents. And so I think that we would be, our sense is that this, this would be fairly limited by removing that "not" in terms of the inflationary adjustments to those RTA inflators that are, are specifically outlined in those bylaws.
Councillor Nishova?
Thank you, I have a follow-up.
Okay.
Is, I, I'm wondering if this is just based on inflation or as high a rate as, as council sets for this? As we've had this conversation often before about DCLs? And I'm just wondering if, if this goes as high as council wants it to? Or is it basically set on inflation, which would be somewhere between one-point-eight percent and two-point-two percent? I'm guessing in the idea of where the project will be, will, will kind of turn out, but probably more like two-point-two percent.
Right, so the, what this would do is actually relate it to, as council did with the, the broader moderate income rental program, the RTA annual allowable increases, which as of, I believe it was twenty eighteen or nineteen, when the RTA was amended to essentially inflate on an annual basis at the rate of inflation. So it, it is an inflationary adjustment that would be linked to CPI.
Okay, and, and could this possibly make the project unworkable or unviable? Or would it set a precedent for other projects?
Right, I think that council, when, you know, council approved the, the policy change to MRRP in July, so we, we, that's why we would see this as being consistent with that, rather than sort of setting new, new precedent, we would see this as being consistent with that.
I, I just wanted to, very quickly, I only have twenty seconds left, so I would like to say that, do I have to make my comments now, Mayor Stewart? Should I move for a second round? So I'll move for a second round then, if I have to, if I have to make comments on top of my question.
Okay, a second or for a second round? Okay, just under the wire, all those in favor of a second round say yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, I'll advance and.
Thanks. I'll try and be brief under a minute.
I'm gonna go through the, I'm gonna go through all the councillors that are on the first round and then I'll come back.
Of course, thank you very much.
Councillor Weave?
Yeah, I'll be voting in opposition, I think that the pro forma was based on the twenty seventeen and six years of compounded interest actually will raise the price. And I think our goal as council is to find the affordable housing that is needed in an affordable housing crisis. And so for me, the developers brought this proposal forward and long working with staff and has going to bring forward only eighteen percent, if it was higher than eighteen percent, I might be thinking different. But because the pro forma was already difficult to work through staff at eighteen percent, I don't think raising the rent is the right thing to do mostly at this time we're looking for housing affordability. So I'll be voting against this and in line with what staff did in the pro forma.
Thank you, councillor Swanson? Uh, mute maybe?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think we should be, I think we should be pushing for more affordability, not less, so I'll be voting against this.
Thank you, councillor Boyle?
Thanks, and mayor, just have a question, a point of information about this amendment, if you'll allow it.
Sure.
To, to staff, I suppose, because we can't ask the, the proponent any questions anymore. But I'm wondering, is the, is the project viable without this change? Like, I guess I'm, I'm. Like, I guess I'm wrestling with why would, why we would be making this change if the proposal before us is for slightly more affordability and perpetuity. I'm glad to see the vacancy control still there, but my question to staff is, is the project viable as is without this change?
Staff?
Thank you, counselor. So I think it's, it's fair to say that the applicant and the staff team did come to an agreement with the rents as they were in twenty seventeen. All we can say at this point is that the applicant has put forward an argument about cost increases and cost pressure on operations and laid out what some of those pressures were and has indicated that that could challenge your viability in operating going forward. And so they've, you know, the motion that's on the table, the amendment that's on the table would address those cost pressures by allowing some inflationary increases in the rents. So we haven't, beyond that, been able at this, at this time, at this point in the process to do any analysis of viability or the impact on the pro forma. So it's simply that the applicant has raised the issue of cost escalation while the old MERP construct didn't allow any escalation to offset those costs. So that's sort of the argument on the table. I can't really comment beyond that on viability.
Okay, what happens if we don't approve this change, but council were to approve the rezoning that's before us? And then I don't know if it would be right away or five years down the road. The project, because the rents aren't being adjusted, aren't going up annually, becomes not viable, I guess. Or I'm just hoping to better understand the kind of implications here.
Yeah, I mean, housing agreements are agreements between the landowner and the city that are registered on title. So it is theoretically possible and to amend housing agreements in the future with council approval. So if there are serious issues in the future, it's not impossible to address those issues. And that could happen. It has been done primarily with nonprofits, but it's theoretically possible in this construct as well.
Okay, and one more question, which is if what's outlined before the amendment is the, basically the MERP requirements from prior to the most recent changes. Have we seen, are we seeing projects go forward with those requirements and seem to still be working out?
Yeah, we certainly have. We have eleven approved projects through the moderate income rental housing pilot program. The staff did recommend some changes to allow rent escalation in that program because we have seen certainly a slowdown and a sort of drying up of interest in bringing forward projects under that, under that sort of strict MERP construct with the rents sort of frozen in the twenty seventeen level. And I think that is largely because from a sort of financing perspective, looking at the costs over time, it does look challenging. So we, there is some credibility in that, in that argument. But certainly some projects are certainly proceeding, but we have seen a reduction in the amount of interest in the MERP program as we've gone forward with implementation.
Okay, so I will just say, I see I'm low on time. I won't be supporting this amendment. I did support the changes to the overall program. But considering that the pro forma on this project and the public benefit was calculated on these past regulations and it's a pretty significant increase in FSR from single family and it's only eighteen percent MERP and not twenty, I'm feeling reluctant to be making these changes on the floor when we don't have the calculations ourselves. So I'm comfortable with the recommendations that were before us without this amendment. Thanks.
Counselor Dejan, actually, Counselor Kirby Young, if you had a first round already, I can't remember.
Well, I proposed the amendment, but I hadn't answered a question on, if that's what you need.
I was just wondering, did you already speak at the, are you in your first round or second round? That's what I'm wondering.
First, I believe.
Okay, so we'll move you ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Kirby Young, and then we'll bring in Counselor Dejanova for a second.
Yeah, thanks. Question, sort of follow up question to staff, because I appreciate the discussion that council's having on this one. And that is that obviously rents in general are guided by what the market will bear. And so that will be a consideration when the building is complete on opening day. But is it conceivable if this amendment does not pass that the applicant may try, the rents might increase, and maybe an effort to do that across all of the units in the project in order to try to manage costs? Is that a conceivable outcome?
And this is a point of information, Counselor Kirby?
Yes, please.
Okay. Staff?
Thank you, counselor. Yeah, I think that it is, I mean, it is a conceivable outcome. I mean, the rents, as Scott Erdman said earlier, and the market will essentially be set by what the market's willing to pay for those. But certainly if there is a cost escalation in a, in a project based on the operating cost going up faster than the rent revenue is going up, which could be the outcome in the MERP construct, at least for those secured units, then certainly a normal course of action for a building owner would be to try to make up for operating shortfalls by increasing revenue and the rents on the market side of the project would be a place to look for that. I think it's fair to say.
Right, so like, so yes, there's an impact obviously on the most affordable units, but it could have an impact on affordability overall potentially on the bulk of the units in the project. I'm reflecting back, is that, is that a fair reflection?
Potentially, to the extent that there's an ability to raise those rents in the market, yeah.
Well, I guess the opportunity would be what the rents that they said on the opening day, assuming that our current regulatory environment remains the same with respect to how much rents can be increased each year, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dejanova, second round.
Thanks very much. Well, my second round was really to have my comments after the questions that were answered. And I had asked about the pro forma and the viability. And understanding that the smallest of details here, I appreciate the sentiment of what my colleague has put forward here in the amendment. But I understand just eliminating that one word could be the difference between the viability of this project or not. And considering it's based on policy, and I also want to add that the changes to the policy that we saw were by amendment that hadn't come forward in staff recommendations and had not had robust consultation in the public realm. And that does concern me. And considering this, I believe, will, as we've seen before, set a precedent for other rezoning. And we have a similar one, and sorry, Mayor, let me know if I'm going overboard here, but I'll try not to go as overboard as some did before. But with similar rezonings that are coming forward, some maybe in this meeting, I won't be able to support this because I'm concerned that it won't make the project viable. And I think that it will send a message to those that we don't want this in our city. And we need to do all that we can to encourage affordable housing, be it affordable rental, affordable homeownership, especially in transit centers, in accessible neighborhoods. And for that reason, I can't support this specific amendment because I know all too well what the unintended consequences of it are. And I know we've seen it, we've seen changes with nonprofits. But I also, I think that as we look, we look at nonprofits, we have to look at what delivers affordable rental and applications such as this do so in the city of Vancouver. And if we want to change affordable rental, maybe we need to look at our timeline, our processes. And I think that we can look at the outcomes of short, but this doesn't meet the criteria for short because we haven't extended it yet to rental tenure. Right now, it's supposed to be social housing or rental tenure, but really it should be called sharp, not short. Social housing and rental tenure, because we haven't extended it just to rental tenure because I understand staff don't have the capacity to do that. If they did, maybe we could shave off time and the timeline to allow for this. Maybe it could correct itself in the pro forma, but I don't think that it's fair to hold an applicant to an amendment that isn't a part of the policy. So for that reason, I won't be able to support it, and I will be supporting the overall project. Thank you.
Thank you. That looks like it's it for the debate on this amendment, so I'm going to call a vote. On the amendment. Thank you, clerks. Counselor Weave and Counselor, Counselor Dominado, please mark as absent. Clerks. Great, okay, thanks. And that fails with Counselor Carr, Counselor Dejanova, Counselor Price, Swanson, Hardwick, Weave, Boyle, and Bligh in opposition. Okay, counsel, we're back on the main queue. Counselor Kirby Young, do you have anything else? You have about three minutes.
I'll just say in terms of the application, I'm happy to see the diversity of the gender types, of additional rental coming into the Camby corridor, building on a very strong pickup on the townhouse typology and the strata. And it's nice to see some additional rental tenure coming in. And I think particularly, as noted by some of the speakers earlier, given that there is Langara, the close secondary area in there, and it's obviously a transit hub, so it's good to see that in terms of providing mix of types within the community. So happy to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Dominado, you can't speak to this one, I don't think.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually consulted the clerks and I said that if I wanted to get a summary of the speakers I missed while I was helping my daughter, that I could move a ten minute recess. So I'm proposing to move a ten minute recess.
Oh, okay. All in favor of a ten minute recess?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Whoops, and I just lost my connection, so that's perfect timing. Eight forty-two, we'll come back in eight fifty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I've skipped the part of my script that should have eased us into this a little bit, which is to go to this, to the, to the staff first. And just because they do have a presentation for us, so if you'll just excuse me for that, I'll go to Scott Erdman from the rezoning center.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to check, can you hear my voice?
Sure can.
Okay, and can you see their presentation on your screens?
We can see it on the. There, I know they're working on the public screen, it's been problematic, we can't see it on our, we can't see on our webback screens, though. It's, so I think you can go ahead if you like.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll begin this presentation, much of which will seem familiar, given the previous agenda item. So again, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Erdman, and I'm the rezoning planner also for this rezoning application on Forty First Avenue. The site is located at the northeast corner of Forty First Avenue and Alberta Street, directly across the street from the rezoning application at three five seven to four seven five, West Forty First Avenue, which you just heard about tonight prior to this presentation. The site is zone RS one, and is shown in red on the map. Much of the zoning surrounding the site is also zone RS one. However, new CD one zones for mid-rise development have been improved in recent years along Forty First Avenue. Sites on adjacent blocks have also recently been rezoned for high-density mixed-use developments. Neighborhood is rich in amenities with schools, parks, shopping, and services within close proximity. The site is well-served by transit, being one block away from the Oakridge Forty First Avenue Canada Line Station, and on the route of the R four Rapid Bus Service. On the site today are two detached houses. There are three units rented to tenants, two of whom are eligible for provisions under the tenant relocation and protection policy. There are multiple new mid-rise buildings along Forty First Avenue that have been recently built, including a recently constructed six-story building right next door. Oakridge Center is one block to the west, detached houses are our neighboring side streets, and Columbia Park is one block to the south. This site is also within the Canby Corridor Plan, which was approved by council in 2018. It also includes a public realm plan and a public benefit strategy. This site is located within the Oakridge Municipal Town Center, and under the Canby Plan is anticipated to develop over time into a high-density mixed-use neighborhood. Along Forty First Avenue are the alphabet blocks A through G, as shown on the map, each of them with site-specific height limits and with density based on urban design performance. This site is Area C. Rezoning can be considered for projects that propose either a hundred percent secured rental or a combination of social housing and strata. In some sites, the ground floor is required to be active commercial. While for others, such as this site, choice of use between commercial or residential is permitted. Any lift in land value for each project is to be redirected into delivering improved affordability. This diagram illustrates the scale of development anticipated by the plan for this site. Developments can be up to ten stories in height, with setbacks above the fourth floor, and choice of use on the ground floor. Additional height for common rooftop amenity spaces can be considered. The proposal before you tonight is for a ten-story residential building with ninety-five secured rental units. As a result of negotiating the land value lift and CAC, ten percent of the floor area, or approximately nine units, will be secured as moderate-income rental units. Both the market rental and the MRR units meet the city's family room policy requirements. A common indoor and outdoor rooftop amenity space is proposed, at a density of five point four three FSR. While the application was received in 2019, processing time was extended for a negotiation of delivering MRR rental units as part of the CAC. If approved, this project would generate over three hundred and thirty off-site and onsite construction jobs. Regarding the affordability of the proposed rental units, this table shows the average starting rents and the average household income served for both the below-market and market rental units for newer buildings on the west side. It also shows the costs associated with home ownership, including monthly costs, and how much would be needed for a minimum ten percent down payment. Below-market and market rental units provide a more affordable housing alternative to homeownership for more than half of the city's population. City hosted open house was held as an in-person event prior to COVID nineteen. Staff have received a total of three responses for this application. Feedback included support for the proposed built form and the inclusion of rental housing. Comments included concerns around the size of family units, and that too much parking was proposed. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that the proposal meets the intended built form policy requirements for this site under the plan. Conditions have been included to further improve the design of the proposal. The public benefits delivered by this application include ninety-five secured rental units, with ten percent of the floor area, or approximately nine units, secured for moderate-income rental units, in addition to a DCL payment. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Canby Corridor Plan, and the proposed height, density, form, and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated for this location. This proposal includes ninety-five secured rental housing units, including nine moderate-income rental units. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in the Appendix B. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, and my apologies to the applicant team, but this is now time to speak. So if you'd like to say anything to council, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Mark Pigna from Cormando Properties. I will keep this short to respect everybody's time. So consistent with our previous application, this project fell at an unfortunate time where there was a policy change. However, this process was already referred to to public hearing. We would ask for a similar amendment to be included, to be the new MRR policy. To sort of speak to some of the comments around this building. So you'll note that there is ten, ten percent versus the previous applications eighteen percent. This form of development as a concrete building in ten stories is not a very efficient form of development. We negotiated CAC pro forma with city real estate staff, and they agreed that this was an appropriate amount of FSR area devoted to affordable housing for this particular project. In terms of other items to note, I think it previously was came up about time of negotiation and changes. So in CAC negotiations, it's often looked at current rent, current costs. So while this is a bit of a change from the negotiation, no future costs would have been contemplated in those performas when they were negotiated with the city. As we mentioned previously, insurance has increased hugely over the last number of years, property taxes continue to go up. And then we're also expecting some major infrastructure costs coming to, I guess, Vancouver-wide, including the Iona wastewater treatment plant that we understand is now up to ten billion dollars, and could, could add as much as five hundred dollars per year per unit. I think I can leave it there, but I'm available to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Great, thank you so much. Yeah, Councilor Kirby Young, you have questions for staff or the developer?
I have questions for the applicant, please.
Okay, please go ahead.
Yeah, my first question, as you mentioned that this was concrete instruction and sort of the, the cost implications of that. Was this, and I don't know how it seems with the timing and council's adoption of mass timber policies, but would a site like this and the density permitted in terms of the Canby Corridor Plan have been a candidate for mass timber? And would that, or would that not have had an impact with respect to costs on this project?
I would be speculating, but with mass timber being a relatively new form of, of construction, my, my understanding is that the cost at this scale would be quite similar to, to concrete today. There may be some advantages in speed, but I'm not sure that's been fully determined yet.
Okay, and then my, my second question, also for, for you, for the applicant, was, you know, you mentioned with respect to cost escalations, knowing that, had you considered, did you deem it was more, it made more sense to move forward with this public hearing as opposing to pulling this project and potentially starting again to go through under updated policy?
Well, to answer frankly, we, we are, you know, delaying the project further also has costs. There's carrying costs associated with land and financing and such, so no, we did not consider that. We do wish to move forward as soon as possible. And so we didn't consider that option.
Okay, fair, because I appreciate that time layers on additional cost. And, and how how do you see those potentially significant costs you reference, for example, the, the additional metro charges? And how would you plan to deal with those, if you don't mind commenting on that?
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess it was debated in the previous hearing that eventually, you know, costs may go up for the market units. Generally speaking, I mean, there's, there's only really two things. It's to try to spend less or, or charge higher rents. Again, I, I want to make it clear that I believe staff did a lot of good work. I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but understood that, you know, the change in policy was a bit of a reset to address these going forward. So I think there was an acknowledgement that, you know, that this, these numbers do need to reset over time, and, and they were set at two thousand and seventeen, and, you know, basically five or six years later. You know, it's expected, we're, we're not looking to profit from this, but just to recoup some of the increased costs.
Okay, and one final question, just staying within the scope of this, but you're obviously building within the Canby Corridor Plan. If you were looking at this site now, I'm trying to keep this specifically within the context of this hearing, and based on the environment or sort of similar parameters, would you make the same decision to do rental, or would you consider strata?
I, I think today we, we would consider it still rental.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dejune, up to five. Counselor Dejune, you're on mute, I think. You're on mute, Counselor Dejune.
I was double muted, so sorry, I wasn't muted on my headset. I was wondering if you could hear me, I was asking, you obviously couldn't. I'm just wondering if, considering we did deal with the previous application already, if the two applications are dependent on each other, so for instance, if one didn't move forward, considering the applications are made by the same applicant, if there would be consideration for another not to move forward?
The applicant?
Yes, I'd like to ask that to the applicant, my apologies, I thought I said that, I was on mute.
Yeah. There's, there's certainly efficiencies for us to, to move forward with both of them at the same time, particularly more so for the smaller building combined with the larger building, but they are two separate applications.
That's important for me to understand, and now that we have approved the previous application, I suppose I can ask that question. And just, just wondered if, in, in the context of this, if, if you feel that it, if I can ask this of the applicant, if you feel it's important that the policy that you, you had submitted this application under is considered the policy that we view this under? Would it be difficult for your pro forma? I don't want to say I have a crystal ball, but I can ask you questions later on. So for instance, if we were to change the, the terms of that policy, or subject you to new policy, would that make your project and your pro forma possibly inviable? For this, or, and/or the other site, as you have relayed that they may be co-dependent?
I think you're asking, yeah, okay, I'm just trying to understand the question.
The applicant, like, would, would, if council subjected you to policy in this application that you didn't apply under, would that affect your pro forma? And if it affected the pro forma for this application, and this application were to be subjected to, to any changes, would it possibly not be viable and affect other applications, as, as you have mentioned, they're co-dependent?
Yeah, well, with all due respect, I don't think we can answer that question hypothetically. I think we'd have to understand what policy we're specifically referring to.
Totally understand. I only get one shot at asking the applicant questions, so I wanted to ask that. But you have, can I ask this? You've based your pro forma on the policy that you had at the time you had submitted your application, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Wheat?
Yeah, similar questions to the last one. The first one's to staff. In the Canby Corridor, we have a preset CAC for buildings six to ten stories of a hundred and twelve dollars. And so for this building, looks like the N C went up sixty thousand square feet, so that'd be about six point eight million, which is about three quarters of a million per unit we're getting for MRR. I'm just wondering if you can help me understand how we're only getting ten percent of the units at MRR, when seven, that amount of money, we would, should get turnkey units if we're only getting nine?
This is Mario Lee with Real Estate Services. I believe that fixed rate of a hundred and twelve dollars applies to net new density for strata developments. For this particular proposal, it is a rental, and so we would review the pro forma as a rental.
So if that was, if this is a strata building, we'd be getting the six point eight, but because it's a rental, we're waiving the six point eight to have rental.
If, if it was a strata and it fell under the applicable fixed rate, then, then yes, it would be charged the fixed rate.
Okay. Can you, obviously, the last project you talked about, there were certain issues with the cost of the building. This one's got shared parking, and so it should have reduced costs. Was there any extreme site conditions that are bringing it from not being able to hit the twenty percent, and actually only hitting ten percent? Can you tell me what were the elements to this project that are not allowing us to get twenty percent that we're seeing across the city?
Sure, I'd say that the key challenges for this site would be the difficulty in, in development, and also the, the density that they are achieving on this site. It's, it's not as high as the other properties or, or the other rezonings, and thereby doesn't have enough density to really offset or provide twenty percent at below-market.
But we're able to get twenty percent on five stories, six stories, so I'm just, can you explain why we can't achieve it on a ten?
For the five and six stories, typically, they would be built a wood frame, which has a lower construction cost than the concrete tower.
If this was a six-story building, then we would be able to achieve more affordability, is that correct?
It's, it's hard to say without looking at the actual pro forma or, or doing a full thorough review. But at this moment, based on what they have proposed in the concrete build, the ten percent is, is what they're, what we find to be reasonable.
Okay, and in the public realm plan in the report, it talks about a setback for the Park Connector Street. Can you talk about how big that setback is, and what is the offsite that this proponent will have to deliver?
I'm sorry, Counselor Wheat, can you repeat the question, please?
Okay, yeah, on page nine, in the public realm strategy, it talks about this being part of the Park Connector, and there would be increased natural habitat. There'll be a landscape setback that's required. I'm just wondering how much of that is part of the offsites that is due to the coordinate has to provide, and what is the setback? Page nine fifty-eight of the rezoning report.
Staff are just looking at the report, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Omar Al Juburi speaking from development planning. The proposed setback in line with the design guidelines of the Canby Corridor Plan of twelve feet would include planting for the, the setback, and include, within the twelve feet, there's four and a half feet that would accommodate onsite planting that aligns with the, excuse me, the, the Park Connector, so four and a half feet.
So four and a half feet is all that we think that the Park Connector differentiates between other streets in the Canby Corridor, is that correct?
That, correct, that's for, for onsite planting, and beyond that, offsite planting as part of engineering jurisdiction, that would complete the, the overall Park Connector.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, and we're on to, that's it. Okay, so now we're going to move to speakers, council. And the first speaker on my list is and clerk, some of these speakers said they were going to comment on both projects at the same time, so I can understand we might have a few that are not on the list. Speaker number one, Maximilian Lapier, paper.
Yeah, I am, I am here.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Mayor Stewart said, I was commenting on both projects with my earlier comments. But clerk did email me personally and note that we are unable to do so. So I will just echo those concerns. I hope that you guys have noted them, I will not repeat it for the sake of brevity and the length of how long council has gone on for this evening. I will, however, add though, that I know Counselor Kirby Young was speaking about the mass timber. I would add that I really appreciate how this building is following the green buildings policy for rezonings, and that the developer has opted to satisfy that policy. So that's something I appreciate as a youth looking at the climate. Those are all my comments for this evening, and have a good one, guys.
Thank you so much. There are no questions. Oh, Counselor Carr, go ahead, Counselor Carr, up to five minutes. You want to unmute?
So much for speaking to both projects, and staying, staying up late to do so. I'm interested in your response to the fact that this particular project is literally half the amount of affordable units that we normally expect in terms of larger, larger project developments. Is that of concern to you at all?
Sorry, Speaker, you're, you're a little hard to hear, so maybe you can speak a little more into your receiver?
Yeah, my apologies. As a youth in Vancouver, this project is adding to our general rental stock, which I appreciate. I understand that you may be able to get some additional zoning or FSR, perhaps, with other zoning programs, that may contribute more affordable rental. However, this project is still contributing affordable rental at the market, at a moderate income rate, whilst also providing nearly ninety-five units of rental to contribute to our stock, so I am not concerned that there is not the amount that you may personally desire.
Or that we normally desire. Not desire, but expect. Okay, that, that's fine. Thank you for your response.
Thank you, Counselor Carr. That's it for questions for you, Speaker. Thank you so much for your time tonight. And we're on to the next speaker, who is Arsalan Shagan, Shagan.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so I, I called in previously, and I sort of combined my statements, but I guess, I guess just for the sake of time, I'm just going to say that I, I do voice, I, I support this development, and I, I just, I hope it goes through. Thank you very much.
I don't see any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker, Speaker number three, Tasha Latik.
Mayor, Speaker three is not on the line.
Next, Speaker four is Itzitkan Guramel.
Hi, Mayor and staff. I said I will be speaking about both of the projects, and I am in support of this development. No other comments, and I believe Ms. Hardwick had a question for me, but I had to run to do something else. Sorry, I wasn't able to answer that at the time. If she would like to ask again, I'm more, I'm happy to answer it now.
Counselor Hardwick?
Yes, my question was, do you work in the housing industry in property development construction?
Yes, Ms. Hardwick, I am a redfield carpenter, and I work in construction.
Thank you very much. I was just trying to contextualize your comments, I appreciate it, thank you.
Pardon me that I have to run away. Thank you, again.
Thanks, and that's it for questions. Thanks very much. We have Speaker number five, Rachel Jang.
Hi, I also spoke for the previous development, and again, like everyone else, for the same reasons, I also support for this project, and I won't repeat everything again, but thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. There are no questions for you, so we have the next speaker number six, Tuba Sonmez.
Mayor, Speaker six is not on the line.
Okay, thanks. How about Speaker number eight, Rocky Zhao? Rocky Zhao, Speaker number eight.
Speaker eight is not on the line, Mayor.
Thanks. How about we do our first call for speakers? One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code four six four two two pound. Clerks, anybody on the line or in the chambers?
Mayor, Speaker six is on the line.
Okay, great. Speaker number six is Tuba Sonmez. Please go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to call in again, I just spoke earlier. Again, I'm not going to repeat everything that I've said, but I definitely do support this project, and I really hope that it will go through. That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. There are no questions for you. I'm going to make a second call now, clerks, if there's anybody wishes to speak of this. The numbers are on Twitter and the live stream. Clerks, anybody there?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, and we'll do our third call, council, at nine twenty-nine, so we'll come back at nine thirty-four to try and finish this item. So five minutes. Sorry. We've hit the twelve hours of
Nine thirty-four.
Okay, one minute. The twelve hours of chairing. Okay, so have we got anybody on the line, clerks?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, so it's waiting for my clock to turn nine thirty-four. There it is. So I will close the speakers list and that we've had little correspondence after five PM while we reclose the uh, you see the public comments and ask the applicant if they have any closing comments. Uh, no closing comments. Thanks very much. Staff, any closing comments?
No closing comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, any questions of staff? Council? Councillor Weave? Yeah, my first question to staff is, do we think that this might create a precedent recognizing that we were hoping to have twenty percent, just kind of the former MIRP project? And this one is coming in under a different proposal, and I'm just wondering, do we see the ten percent? Recognizing that the parking is actually in the building next door, so do we see this as a precedent setting for us not to be able to deliver affordability moving forward?
Hi councillor, thank you for the question. Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. I I don't think we would see this as a um, as a precedent. There, we're responding to the plan policies that are in place. So in areas where the plan would require twenty percent or through policies such as the moderate income rental housing pilot program where it's a requirement, we'll continue to require that. In this case, as as Mary Lee described, there are some um, particular issues with the site. For example, a a ten story concrete building is a relatively expensive building to build. Um, so those those sorts of things in this particular case make it hard to get up to that benchmark that we're usually trying to hit. Um, but we don't see it as a as a precedent or or a worry for achieving that in in other cases, particularly where either the policies or the plans require it.
Okay, but in this situation, there's no policy that requires anything higher, and so this is completely forming under all policies we have?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. It's a negotiated approach on this site, and so our real estate services staff work with the applicant and and review the financials of the project and secure as much affordability as is possible and to and still have a viable project.
Okay, and do you think it's in future, do you think we'd be able to be more transparent about a bit of that process? Or do you think because of the real estate negotiations and the difficulty of having that transparent, it might be difficult to showcase those numbers to the public?
Yeah, I think because the real estate process is a is a sort of negotiation and there's the proprietary information involved in it, we it's difficult to be transparent about the numbers that are involved in that. I think some of the questions you were asking earlier about how we show the cost, if you will, of the affordability that's being secured is something we can certainly have a discussion about and take away and and already have started to have that conversation. So the the some of the transparency around the cost of the affordability we're securing is certainly something we'll we'll talk about.
Okay, so we could tell the public that when we look at a MIRP square foot, this is how much valuation we think it is in case B and how much per rental square foot we see as a valuation to the public, so that the public really understands the trade-off we're making here today of not taking eight million dollars for a strata ten-story building, but instead getting a rental building with nine units.
Yeah, we'll we'll take the the details of of how to present that and what we can present away, but we certainly understand uh, what it is you'd like to see, councillor.
Okay, cuz yeah, I guess my comments on this one, I'm really struggling with this one. Still on the question queue, councillor. Uh, we we still have to move a second, so there's time for debate later. Okay, thanks. Uh, councillor Dejanova, questions to staff?
No, I was prepared to move the motion.
Uh, there's someone else on the queue, so if you wanted to move the motion, please go ahead.
I don't have anything to say really, except the same things as I said about the last one and understanding that they are co-related.
Okay, thanks. And we need a seconder? Seconder for this motion? Anybody? Councillor Boyle, okay, now we've started the debate queue. If anybody has anything they want to say on this. Some of you may have been on the question queue. Okay, councillor Weave, uh, go ahead councillor Weave, up to five minutes. Yeah, I'm, I am struggling with this one. Um, and normally I'm not. I think that having rent-controlled units is great. I think having rentals is great. I do think though that we are starting to get to a point where we have to balance what is the community benefit of this rental, um, recognizing that this nine million or nine million dollars for a ten-story building that provides this amount of rental and only nine secured units. Could that be better utilized to provide affordable housing and other services needed to the neighborhood as well as increasing the amenities? I know we're getting a four and a half foot setback. If it was a larger setback for the Greenway, I think I'd be much more inclined. Um, I'm just finding it difficult without the clarity to really showcase to the public when we do have to make these tough decisions on how can we best deliver affordability in this community? Councillor Swanson's been very strong on, is this gonna be a complete community? Are we going to be able to have the residents we want to be living together in a complete and exclusive and inclusive, I mean, neighborhood? And I'm struggling to start to see that as we continue to approve these projects. So I'm struggling with this one. I really appreciate it, Dan Garrison's comments about what we could do in the future to have better information and data to make these decisions. Thank you. Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, um, everything I said about the first one goes for this one in spades. This one's worse. Um, we get nine percent affordable as opposed to eighteen. The eighteen is down from twenty. I think we should be moving in the opposite direction. Here we are um, increasing the density by almost six times. We're giving DCL waiver, we're giving a CAC waiver, we may be having government financing. And all we get is nine percent affordable. I I, we just can't keep backing down like this and expect that we'll get any more or that we'll meet any kind of affordability targets that we have. It's ridiculous. Yeah, so I can't move for this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Fry?
Yeah, I have to echo the comments of councillors Swanson and Weave. This is pretty disappointing in in the delivery. I appreciate that this particular piece of land has been sitting kinda vacant for some time or sort of underdeveloped for some time. And maybe there's some challenges based on the timing and the and the pro forma that was originally generated. But I I I do struggle with the notion that, you know, we we now have a building code that can allow wood frame, wood uh, mass timber construction up to ten stories. And uh, I think that getting hung up on the fact that this concrete construction and therefore can't deliver the kind of affordability that we look for in the MIRPs is is kind of a a real disappointment insofar as that kind of partnership and commitment that we, you know, are supposed to have on these kind of projects with the development industry. That's it. I don't know if I want to vote against it because they are nine MIRP units and they will deliver something and they are rental units and there's family units in there and it's worthwhile, but but I I I do feel that like we need to do better and 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 letting them get a pass on on concrete construction where we could have maybe achieved better uh, better results for Vancouverites. Uh, if we had changed that construction model seems like maybe a signal that we could send for future projects of this nature, so probably won't vote against this, but I won't vote for it, so.
So councillor Carr, oh, sorry, councillor Fry, are you finished?
That was, that was just, that's it.
Okay, thanks. All right, councillor Carr.
Yeah, I I have to admit, I'm struggling too. I am very worried about a slippery slope where we decrease the percentage of actually really affordable units. And uh, ten percent, nine units, that's so low. I mean, we have been praised for having an inclusionary zoning policy that that achieves and demands much more, double this. And um, uh, I I am very much struggling. I mean, yes, okay, it's Camby Corridor and there are some units that are uh, you know, that are going to be moderate income units, but it's it's minimal. And uh, this is, this is really not good enough for the housing crisis that we have in Vancouver.
Councillor Dejanova?
Thanks. Understanding that this um, that the applicant has said that there are some synergies between this and and an application we've already dealt with. I would have concern that if I didn't vote for this, as I had for the previous project, it it could not be viable. That's what I understood and asked the applicant. And for that reason, I would, I would urge council members to also understand in some of the comments that I've heard, you know, we've been praised for, you know, having certain policies. The decisions we make are watched closely by those who are considering applications. So if we want to make policy better, we make policy better, but we understand and only two of us, uh, myself and another colleague were on council uh, at the time that this policy was passed. And I think it's, it's like not honoring something that that has happened here before us. So if we want to do better, we can do better in our policy. But to, I'm concerned about the message that we will send to so many other applicants or possible applicants, potential applicants that may choose not to apply because they're not sure that they want to take the risk. Because this council, even if if we have new policies and we put them through those gears, may not in the end, um, you know, consider those policies and instead consider the affordability. So this meets the policy. I see that in the uh, report, the referral report that came forward by staff. I see that this um is unique and we see it sometimes in that it may, um, this is tied to the viability of another project and this project is tied to that project's viability. And we have voted on projects, I also understand, and taken cash CACs as council that provide less affordability than this. That are strata. So for that reason, I will be supporting it and I I would hope that um all of council would consider the fact that if their votes aren't consistent, there could be some viability issues with both projects. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that is it for debate. So I think we can go to the vote. Councillor Hardwick, councillor Weave? Councillor Hardwick, councillor Weave? Mayor, can I get vote assist and abstention? Abstention, councillor Hardwick?
I will also abstain. I can't get my car, my uh, thing working.
Thank you very much. I'll have the clerks mark you abstaining councillor Hardwick. So we have, that has passed with councillor Swanson in opposition. Okay, thanks uh, for that. Clerks, I'm just gonna check with you before I call for a motion to adjourn if there's anything else that we need to do.
Motion to adjourn?
Just gonna wait for one second with the clerks just to make sure I haven't forgotten anything because I'm this twelve-hour chairing gig, you never know. Clerks, are we good to go? Oh, uh, mics are not working for the clerk, so yes, we're good to adjourn. Councillor Hardwick, thank you. We have a seconder?
Second, councillor Dejanova.
Okay, councillor Dejanova, thank you. All in favor, yay. Opposed, nay. Thank you so much, council. Good work today. We'll see you tomorrow. Brown dog day. Okay, bye-bye.
Thanks, thanks Mayor, thanks staff.
Thanks, everyone.